But, I mean, send something.
Of course, yeah, yeah.
Here you go. Ten, nine, eight, seven. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 2 meeting of the Rochester Planning Commission. And I would ask the clerk to call the roll.
Gordon, you there?
I don't see.
Maybe Nick, can you take the roll?
Chairman McGee.
Here.
Vice Chair Hauser.
Here.
Mayor Stook, Mayor Vixen.
Here.
Councilmember Secretary.
Your microphone, Nick.
Here.
James. Commissioner Patricia Clark Martin.
Here.
Recording in progress.
David Gasson is absent, Sarah King is excused, Eric Lord absent, and Matthew Stone absent.
Okay, we have a quorum, thank you. So are we, are we on? Are we having technical issues? James, are we on?
You can hear us, Vidia?
Yes, I can hear you loud and clear.
There's Jeff, okay, great. Excuse me, members of the public?
Yep, same for me.
Okay, thank you, Jeff.
Okay, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Just at the beginning, I want to thank my colleague, Christian Hauser, for pinch hitting here while I was off playing in the south for a few meetings, we'll say.
Glad to have you back.
Thank you very much. I understand you did a fantastic job and...
In my own mind, I did, yes.
Well, you know, it's a great experience for you. And I'm glad you got the opportunity to do it. And it gives the public and the council and the staff an opportunity to see you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
And I think that's very good.
Glad to help, glad to serve.
Okay. Any public comments? And this would be on items not on the agenda. This would be an opportunity to come forward and, Nick, do you know if we have any remote, any callers at this point?
At this point, we do not let... Brian, the last phone number there, I'm not sure who that is, 451?
Yeah, so I see one phone number, but the rest are city staff.
Okay, okay, thank you. And no members of the public present have any comments at this point? Okay, thank you. Next, number four is approval of the minutes.
Hello?
Oh, hi.
Hello?
Hi, who do we have here?
Hi. This is Jane Turner, I'm Parkdale.
Hi, Jane, how are you tonight?
I'm good.
Good.
I have a question for public comments.
Yes, please.
Has anybody on the commission been approached or asked or requested a permit for 501 West University?
What is that property? I'm not sure by address I know what it is.
It's the old school.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah. Nick is here with us tonight, and as far as we know administratively, there have been no submissions of any sort on that property.
Correct.
So somebody has put a bid in on that property and it's been accepted, but I understood that there were six weeks in there. And I can't believe that a housing community would go in there, tear down, without approaching the city first.
Now, you know, that property is owned by another public entity and would not be appropriate for us.
Which is?
It's owned by the school district. And we're not involved at all in the negotiation or the bidding process, don't care to be involved in it. And Mr. Mayor, you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just, I talked to the, and I said this publicly, I talked to the superintendent a couple of weeks ago now, and they are in the process of, which is going to take them a couple of months of reviewing the bids they have. We have nothing to do with that. They're keeping us informed, but we have no thing. But it will have to come to the Planning Commission eventually.
So Jane, sooner or later, of course, maybe their negotiations fall apart and it goes back on the market, we don't know. But, you know, it's just, at this point, because this body, and then perhaps the city council, will have, you know, the ability to review it and then a responsibility to pass judgment on it, it wouldn't be appropriate for us to be involved. So we're not. But the time will come, so...
Okay, but I can't understand how a housing builder would go in there without approaching the city for permits to tear it down.
You know, it's probable that if that bid moves along and somebody wants to do something with it, my suspicion is that Nick will be the first one to hear. Because he's also our Economic Development Director. And any developer of consequence is going to come to the city so they make sure they fully understand the planning, zoning, future master plan issues regarding the property before they put a dime into it. So I think it's, I think it'll be coming down the road, but as of right now, no, we don't, we don't have any knowledge of it.
Okay. And also Vidia was going to hold a meeting about the difference between zoning and planning. Has that date been set? I've requested to go.
Vidia?
Yes, Ms. Turner. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I put forth a proposal, and I was just talking to Nick today about sending it to the city manager, but I understand there is something, some changeover happening at the city, so my hope is we will get it done within the next couple of Planning Commission cycles. We will have, and Ms. Turner, I'll make sure that you are informed of it. It is about the fundamentals of planning and zoning and the overarching entity law based upon which planning and zoning takes place. But definitely keep you informed, as of now, the city has not fixed a date for it, for me.
Okay, thank you. And I understand Nick is taking a well-deserved retirement. So has he, has there been a replacement made?
Nick just keeps being here.
Nothing yet.
Nothing yet, Jane.
Okay, thank you, and you have a good evening.
Thanks, Jane, thanks for calling.
Uh-huh, bye.
Now, looking at the board, is there anyone else waiting here? So we're all set. Okay, and again, no one in the audience has public comment at this time. Next, number four, approval of the minutes. This is consideration of the minutes of the regular meetings of April 4th and 21st.
So moved.
Mayor moves approval of both of those sets of minutes. Any discussion?
Board.
Okay, so we have a motion and support. Nick, you want to call the roll?
Chairman McGee?
I'm going to abstain because I was not at either meeting.
Can I pass him then?
Can I pass him then?
You can.
Well, I'll approve him then and end the controversy.
You can.
On that, on that matter, that's fine.
Mayor Vixen?
Yes.
Councilman Stage?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Hauser?
Yes.
Yes.
You're good at this. Thank you, sir. Next, number five, this is a public hearing. Public hearing regarding consideration to erect a temporary seasonal ADA compliant auxiliary tent in the green space south of the existing community house building adjacent to the parking lot located at 816 Ludlow Avenue. Who is presenting on this?
Vidia will be doing that.
Thank you, Nick. Chairman and Planning Commissioners, this, if I may have screen sharing ability, please. Brian?
Yep, I'll make you co-host.
Okay, thank you. Okay, just give me one minute, please, I'll pull it up on, okay, I can, okay. Give me one second, please, I don't know why the screen is not, okay, I will try this again. This is a project that was being run by the city. The city manager, Blaine Wing, was present at your last meeting, and he had mentioned that the community center had gone out for bids for the plan for the community house that was previously approved by the Planning Commission. However, the bid for that project came in way higher than the city anticipated. So while the city is trying to figure out the next steps for the season's events, the plan is to propose a temporary tent on the south side of the existing community house building. This tent will have barrier-free access, and that was designed by AEW, which is the city's engineer. So there is an access from the tent to the building itself, and the rest of the plan remains the same. This is seeking temporary approval. I was not really involved in the temporary aspect of the project since the city was handling it internally. If there are any questions, I'm sure the community house representative is present at the Planning Commission meeting and can probably add some more information regarding the proposed tent.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? Vidia, is that going to be attached with a temporary connection to the actual building? Or is it just adjacent to?
I believe that this is an image of the tent that you see on the screen over here. I'll zoom in a little bit. And this will be the tent, I believe its hours of operation will be limited so as not to create a nuisance to the abutting single-family residential homes. It will not be physically attached to the existing building, although a sidewalk, barrier-free sidewalk connection, will be provided from the tent to the existing building itself.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, Mr. Smith, he could probably give us some overview, because I know that you weren't here in Allen.
Hi, folks. Is this switched on? Okay. Yeah, my name's Alan Smith, I'm the executive director over at the community house. So this tent was originally designed, it's been in the planning for over a year, so that when we go into construction, we'd have very limited space, so it's to replace the space. We are very aware of the community, the park rules, noise, so we're going to be doing, I want to assure everybody, we're going to be doing everything that we possibly can to minimize the disruption for anybody. If we could just have the screen, Lydia, to go back down, or up, yeah, keep going. So, and I'll say, there is actually, there's another drawing of this that AEW did, because I asked them to put on, on the bottom right hand corner, as you're looking at the concrete pad there, there is a big tree. We're also going to be planting large arborvitae, so that when you walk down Wilcox or drive down Wilcox, you'll see very little of the tent. So that when the tent side is open facing the park, which is to the right, you won't be able to see it much. We will, the tent is going to have walls on all four sides. The lower one, which is the south side of the bottom of the tent, that one, that will be permanently shut. We will zip tie it closed, we've just had a meeting with supervisors tonight, so everybody knows that will not be openable. Under normal circumstances, the one facing the parking lot will be completely closed. So the only ones potentially open are going to be the one next to the building and the one into the park. We are looking at right now, because we are doing very well with bookings, we, you know, we're obviously a nonprofit, and we're trying to improve everything so that we can adhere to the 20-year agreement with the city that the entity has got. So, you know, my goal has been to improve the space, improve the usability, everything. And since COVID has really ended as far as we're concerned, I know it hasn't completely, we're inundated. So we will have, in fact, in anticipation of tonight, I looked at the schedule, we have only got two events right now that are going to go till 11 o'clock. So any new events coming in now, we're going to strongly explore, that people will have to start packing up at 9:00, and we're closed by 10:00. And we're not going to allow new music into the tent. So we've got two events where there's music. I'm going to be around this summer, especially June, that's where a lot of the activity's going to be. And we're trying it, we might get doing some construction this year, that's why we wanted to put it up and try it, because it will be vital to the nonprofit when we actually do construction. We've now got 14 other nonprofits using the building. So when I started, it was nine. We've now added Rotary, Cub Scouts, Lions Club. So it is, you know, it's a very, it's becoming a very viable place and a very busy place that will certainly belong in the community. I believe that the house to the south of us, we're going to be looking at, the city is going to be putting up a row of arborvitae all along the parking lot. And arborvitae typically are a very good sound barrier. So when we do have a speaker in the tent, it will be at the south end of the tent facing north. So it's facing away. So we've done, we're going to do as much as we can to make it as comfortable as we can. And, you know, we just ask everybody, you know, normal business during the week when it's the meetings, not be a problem. It's really grab party time, and that's, we talked about it tonight, it's for the next five or six weeks, that's when we're going to keep a handle on it. And everybody knows, if anything gets out of hand, our supervisors called the police desk and asked them to come and do a drive-by, that, we've never had to do it, but it normally shuts it all down. And just so everybody knows, for two years, we've had the tent on the back patio. Steve Shetland will tell you, we had one complaint on noise. And it wasn't out of the norm. You know, I think the band shell makes more noise, it was one person way up on Griggs. I have no idea how the sound carried that well that night, but, so it's been pretty good. So we're going to do everything to contain anything, and we're going to try valley parking this summer, so that we can, if it's a busy day, we can valley park and control it. And, yeah, that's about it.
Any questions for Allen?
Just very quickly, if I may. In the interest of full transparency and disclosure, I have helped Mr. Smith with a little bit of fundraising for this issue, it will have zero influence or impact on my decision this evening. But the one question I did have, neighbors are all okay with it, the houses on Wilcox?
Well, I've not, I've not heard anything, and I know I'm addressing it. I know there's some of them here tonight, Amy.
We're all from the west side of that, so we're not, none of the, plus your...
We'll get to that.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I have, yeah.
One of the questions that comes up, I know you need this during the construction.
Yeah.
But that hasn't begun yet. So what I don't want to see happen is that this become overflow to handle the demand that you've got prior to the construction.
It's not. It is going to be, this now we're testing, you know, I mean, a long-term goal was as we, to minimize the downtime. So it's been talked about for a long time, and hopefully we'll get there this summer. From the lobby entrance, right down to the south end of the building, we are hoping to be able to replace the roof and the siding. It'd be great if we could start on it, whether we get there this October, get it done before the Christmas. So that's all the dirt out of the way. And then when we go to demolish the north end of the building, then the tent come up and it's all clean.
Yeah.
So what we're doing now, and part of it as well is, we made a big commitment to Rochester Rental, that have been terrific with us on tent rental. So we made an extra investment so that we had tent availability. So, you know, we're having a test run. We're not, it's not going to be super busy in the tent, the focus is still inside the building as long as we can do it, but we have that ability.
That was my second point, that until the construction begins, you make every effort to put noise generating events inside the walls of the building for as long as you can.
I guarantee you, we're going to be, you know, we're really aware of it, and we're going to be all over it. And really, if we'd have, if we'd have known, I mean, shutting down a little bit earlier, we still might be able to change the rules on that one, and we'll see. But, and then the noise, like I say, I'm going to be around personally.
Okay.
And...
What do you see? Do you have to rebid this project again to try to come up with better?
Yeah, we'll be, I'm hoping we're going to be coming back in front of you guys in the not-too-distant future. We're going to, I'm working on some things now.
Okay.
With locals, and we'll come up with some different options.
Okay.
So that the city can decide on the affordability, obviously from our standpoint, and I think for the cities, I mean, I'm a resident of the city, I walk to work, you know, we want the best bang for the buck.
Absolutely.
So there's certain things that we know we need to do, whether we can do the basement, we're going to get that bid as a separate...
So maybe it takes two years or so to do what you want to?
It might be, I mean, I really hope we can get going next year.
Yeah.
But, you know, the other factor as well is the pricing starting coming down. You know, I talk with Dillman and Upton constantly, they're all over the wood pricing every day of the week, and the other contractors that we have as well. So everybody's keeping a careful eye on the financial market, the mortgage market, housing market, and at the moment, all the signs are, it's slowing down.
Okay, very good. Okay, this matter is scheduled for a public hearing, and we'll consider the public hearing open at 7:24. And I would ask if there are any members of the audience that would like to come forward and speak on this project. Just give us your name and address and fire away, yeah, at the podium. I got to get you recorded.
My name's Mike Pizzo, I live at 750 Ludlow.
Okay, Mike.
So I'm all supportive of everything they're doing at the community house, it's going to be absolutely gorgeous. Our big concern, I'm going to speak for my neighbors now, they can feel free to speak for themselves. We did have a couple of events last year, one in particular that was extremely loud, and it was in the back of the park, and it was, you know, and it was, and it went all night, and I don't know how it got shut down.
Not at the community house?
At the community house, behind it, where the old, where the tent used to be.
Yeah.
It's behind it.
By the gazebo?
Yeah, by the gazebo, correct. And it just went, it went on, it was extremely loud, it was a beautiful wedding, but they just, they were enjoying themselves, you know, and it went on and on and on. Finally, it got shut down. Our big concern is, you know, I'll support everything they're doing, they're going to do a beautiful job. They keep talking about this temporary tent. It's built like a brick shithouse, it's got footings and foundations, wire mesh, you know, sidewalks, it's not built temporary. I'm a commercial contractor, I know what temporary looks like, I know what potential permanent looks like. They're going for, and I might be speaking out of turn here, but it doesn't look like it's going to go away. Once it's become successful, you're not going to want to lose the revenue. You're selling, you know, these, and it happens to be on all the residential side, there's nothing, you know, so we all back up to the community house, she's, Amy, 26 feet from the tent, that's her property line.
I can assure you, at least from this commissioner's point of view, this is going to be temporary.
Yeah.
And if it gets approved, there'll be a timeline put on it.
So that's the thing, I'll support it, because I'm a commercial contractor, I get, you know, what it takes.
And I think we well understand what you're saying.
Right. But I'm just afraid that once we all say, we support you, it doesn't go away, grad parties, year after year, tents, now it's a seasonal, because being, it's, on our part, it's titled a seasonal tent.
So you'll have to hear from the other commissioners later, but to me, it says temporary, it's going to be temporary.
And we're reading seasonal, on our paperwork, it says seasonal. So that's why we're here, because seasonal means...
It's not a permanent facility.
Otherwise, I'm supporting everything they're doing, it's going to be a beautiful place.
Maybe you'd like to comment on that.
Yeah.
We don't see it. We've been told from day one, you know, the concrete comes up, the city put the concrete down, we paid for it, for the whole length of the concrete, we have no intention of using that. I mean, if you look at the tent at the back, we've learned a lot in the two years, so everything I've talked about, about controlling the noise, and I get the one wedding, I think that is the one where we had the one complaint, and our supervisor kept, so we've learned on that. But that was one out of, I mean, that tent was busy from, from the beginning of May till the mid-October for two years, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
And only one complaint.
We had one where it got...
You mentioned something key for me, the concrete will go also.
Yeah.
In other words, that's not going to become a pickleball court.
You know something, because if we were going to do a tent, the idea when we renovate the north wing, the concrete's on the back patio is very old, that gets all renewed, so it will be either a wedding, or if we came back and asked for a tent to go up at that point in time at the back of the building, that's where then it would be temporary. That would be the temporary request. There'll be nothing permanent. And to the point of grad parties, these are the sort of restrictions we can put on it. I get it, you know, I, and we'll just, grad parties are inside the building. If they want to use, if they want to use music, a lot of, we have grad parties, they have no music, you know, we restrict people, they'll be restricted to the property, they can't go walking around the park with alcohol, they'll have to stay on the tent or come into the building and use the decks. And if you don't, then we call the police department and get them to come out and do a walkthrough.
Anyone else that would like to speak on this subject?
I'm Tom Shadden at 734 Wilcox Street.
Would you repeat your name now?
Tom Shadden.
Thanks, Tom, I wanted to get you on the tape.
Okay. I live two doors down from Amy. I understand what Alan's trying to do here, but I get the impression that the tent is only, you had said minimal use to the tent, is that correct?
It's going to be, it's going to be, it's not for all, it's not, we're not going to be using the tent and not using the inside on a general basis.
So the tent is going to be a replacement for the facility if you're full in the facility, is that correct?
It will be a replacement for room's day B and L, which is the largest spaces, reduced space.
But those spaces are not going to be reduced for some period of time, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So I guess my question is, what is the purpose of the tent now versus down the road, when you need it? There are things that happened on that street, for example, you did put in the roadway, so high access off Wilcox Street, and we have a little, we've had a road barrier up there for almost a year now, that people say they can't come down, well, people do come down, and it does increase traffic on whether you know it or not. Not from the standpoint that the people are going through there and getting to the facility, but they possibly come down the street, turn around, and keep going back.
Thinking they can get in the park.
They think they can get through, because we have one little sign down there that says, dead end. And nobody reads that sign.
Nick, I don't know if you can think that through, look at what's there, maybe increase that in any event.
Yes, sir.
I mean, that goes, that goes not just for this, it goes for arts and apples, and every event that is held in the park is continuous flow of traffic down that street, all right?
Nick, we'll look at that with the police department, see if there's some more, you know, appropriate or siding or signing that helps, yes.
Tom?
Come back up.
I know that the...
You got to, you got to come to Mike.
Yeah, I've only known this guy since 1987, he's a rogue. He's a good guy. There is a lockable gate going there, it used to be locked before, but when the driveway into the park was done, I know that's slated to be done. So that, that should be locked up, it's nothing to do with us, it will be, you know, one of the arm gates, I believe.
Are you talking at the end of Wilcox, where it butts the park?
Correct, yes.
But you're talking about the traffic just coming down the street, thinking they get in the park. It's the annoyance.
They don't see that, they go on Google and see, community house, boom, right down that street, all the time.
Then they have to turn around.
So maybe additional signage up at 7 that says, no access to the community house, okay, got you.
Yeah. Right, because currently, all we have is a dead end sign.
Correct, okay.
Yeah, let's add some...
Yep, I agree.
Thank you. Anyone else? Who is Amy? Oh, come on, Amy, we have to hear from you now.
Hi, the first question I want to know is...
Oh, you got to give us your name and address. Aren't we annoying?
Your name and address.
I'm Amy Shaw, and I live right next to the tent, 749 Wilcox Street.
Thank you.
And when I look out my window, I see everything, I hear everything, I hear conversations, I hear people playing games, I hear cars going to the dumpster, I hear everything. And it's a concern to me in how I can address it when we have the tent out there. Also, wondering about the lights, you know, if the lights are going to be on, I need to know if you are going to run generators for fans, in addition to it. I appreciate the respect and the back and the arborvitae trees. I wanted to know when the trees will be done, if it's before the tent is being put in.
For now.
And if it's necessary to have the tent this year and next year, based on, we need it for us. So, a couple...
Do you want to take a shot at that?
Well, I know, I know Nick's, I'll be working on the arborvitae, and so really... And, um, so really, the viewing and, uh, the view for Amy, I know it well, Amy and I have talked about it a lot. Um, that should be blocked off when the arborvitae go on her lot line, uh, right down the side of the park. And the other thing that's gonna happen, um, I believe from DPW that the, um, the dumpster surround will be going in shortly, so it should be quite attractive. It'll have limestone caps. You won't be able to see the dumpster at all, it'll be high enough. And there will only be one entrance for our supervisors, and that is from the north of the dumpster. So you won't have anybody coming around like you do now to the southern side of the dumpster, 'cause there's gonna be one entrance. So it'll be completely blocked off. And, um, yeah, I mean, uh, you know, in another world, we'd have a tent, we'd have asked for the tent during any time to be on the back patio, but unfortunately, that's gonna be in the middle of construction when we tear it down.
You mentioned lights, are, are there any security lights or anything like that that might shine off the property?
If anybody walked in the park last year and saw the lights, they're like a Costco LED light, they're soft lighting throughout the tent.
But no spots on the outside of the tent that?
No, and no generator. It's all hardwired to the, uh, to the building. So there's real, I, you know, there's really nothing more, you know, than, um.
Then the other question you asked is necessity for this year versus next and?
There again, I tried to explain it before, you know, it's, um, between the commitment to the tent, because it was a heavy investment.
Yeah.
And we have fully planned on being fully under construction with the north wing torn down by now, or very shortly, that was the plan. And then, and then with the, we've discovered now as we're learning, you know, the points, the good points that people have brought up about noise and all the concerns, what we're gonna learn so that when the tent goes up for construction, we have it nailed down to the best of our ability and we limit, we're gonna limit what we do during that timeframe.
Okay, very good.
That's all I can.
Amy, does that give you a pretty good answer?
Um, yeah, so what about after hours?
Well, when.
What do you mean by that?
They can attend after hours if other people are coming in, he uses the tent.
Well, well, after hours, we're, we are, we have got some events now that are already booked that it will be finishing with two that finish at eleven o'clock at the moment. But all future events, we're gonna limit them at ten. So, um, people will start leaving at nine because they've got an hour to clean up. So, I mean, largely it'll still be daylight. Um, you know, the bulk of, the bulk of the parties are wedding showers, baby showers, memorials, celebration of life. Um, you know, it's all the family parties that are going on these days.
Not too many weddings per se?
Um, I don't think we've got any weddings in the tent. Um, we've been very limited on weddings. It'll be, I think it'll be a different story when the renovation's done, but we'll, we, we intend limiting the weddings. We've got such a rich history of it being a family party place, we don't want to disrupt that.
Okay.
'Cause the greater community, community uses it to a great extent.
Okay. Thank you, Amy. Yes, please.
That's regarding to, um, I know you do, you've asked with the garbage that people leave behind and it gets blown over to the tent and I could clean it up, and I just wanna be able to show we can cut out with that, with the cleanup.
Amy, Amy, any, anytime, I see Amy all the time, anytime you got a problem that's cleanup like that, you come and see me. And if you can't get DPW to clean it up, if it's not ours, then you come and see me and we'll get it fixed.
And if you could stress that to the users, that, that's imperative.
Yeah, normally it's the supervisors, so I'm, I'm not sure, I'm gonna ask the supervisors, how does that happen? I suspect it might be when they, um, they come and empty the dumpster. I don't think it would be when the supervisor's throwing sealed bags into the dumpster.
Yeah.
Um, at the moment, we have a Monday and a Friday pickup for the dumpster. Uh, when the new one was put in, it's a double wide, so we could limit it down to one at some point in time. So, but I suspect that's what's happening. It'll be when the, uh, the dumpster, sorry, that's.
Everybody's looking for their phone.
Yeah.
Thank you, Amy.
Yes.
Anyone else, uh, please?
I'm a little short here, just bring this down. Hi, Lauren Strumpack, uh, three forty-six Drace. And, um, I apologize for being a little late. I know that I probably missed a few.
We know that you were late.
So my daughter had a commitment and she always comes first. So, um, I just wanted to make a comment. It sounds like some things were mentioned here, um, about the noise. And I'm at the end of Drace, the very end of Drace. And last year, there were a couple of events that we did hear some noise. It sounds like you've maybe got some things in place to address that. It's more the late night events, um, and I think Linda Gammich has sent some, um, remarks via email regarding that too, 'cause she and I had chatted and we were, we're both at the end of the street. So we can absolutely hear those, that noise. It, it, you would think that it wouldn't come through the trees, but it certainly does come through the trees. So just from a family perspective, and we're glad the community house is there, we're, you know, I've been a longtime Rochester resident, um, only at this residence for five years, but we're happy it's there. We've never had a problem with it in the five years besides last year. Um, but there were a couple of events that went towards like ten, you know, ten-thirty. And, um, my daughter's not sensitive, but she was like, I can't sleep, mom. I mean, this is windows closed. Um, little bit, some like bass thumping. So the, the parties are not the problem. It's not necessarily noise from the people, but it's the music that are included with some of these events. So I just wanted to go on record saying that I hope that those sorts of things will be taken into consideration. And, um, you know, I don't know, I know that Rochester has a noise ordinance. It's not really easy to find online. Um, I believe it's ten o'clock, I think it's ten o'clock, and that you also shouldn't be able to hear it within a certain radius. I mean, us being able to hear it at the end of Drace and at the end of Griggs is certainly beyond that radius. So I don't know if that's something that you can put in place. I, I don't really even know who handles that sort of thing. If it's a city that kinda gives the rules there, or if it's the person um, managing the tent and the patrons that are there.
Ultimately, it's the city and it would be Nick and his staff.
Okay. So, yeah, the, the noise is, is a concern. And, um, and it was definitely, um, again, not from the people, but from the music. So if there is a time that it could be, hey, it has to be cut off at nine o'clock. Um, I know it's still daylight hours out there, but once it started going past nine-thirty, I was like, all right, that's a little late. So, uh, just wanted to put, put my two cents out there and let you know that we all heard it at the end of Drace, or everybody heard it at the end of Griggs. And we're just a little concerned about it moving forward.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to come and speak on this subject? Okay, we will, uh, declare the public hearing held. It's, uh, seven forty. Now we're back up to the commissioners and, uh, discussion on this matter. I think we've heard loud and clear from those who attended here that noise is a concern. Deeply support the community house, but, you know, you gotta live there. And we get the message and the point about the temporary structure, we also, I'm glad you pointed that out. It's probably something we're gonna require. We typically have. The, the, uh, the last temporary thing we had up was when Cedar Brook was about to open. And we allowed a similar but much smaller structure to go in, is a couple of years ago. And we, uh, gave them a fairly tight leash. They had to come back in again to get that extended. And I suspect that you'll hear one of the commissioners put that kinda language in the, uh, the motion here in a bit. So commissioners, any other? Vidia?
No, I think.
Patricia.
Patricia, go ahead.
Yeah, yes. Um, I, I do think there should be a time limit on it. And the, the other thing is that I don't think arborvitae are going to be appropriate to, to.
Patricia is a landscape architect, by the way, just so you know.
My background isn't that. I don't currently do that, but, um, it's my background. And I, I don't think it's going to help the noise. It will definitely help with the view. So I just think that it's, it's something that should be.
Can you give an opinion on what would help?
Distance.
Ready-made noise barrier?
Yeah, distance.
So plantings are?
I think the plantings help buffer noise, but it never completely eliminates it. Just as you said, she's up on Drace. She can hear it through the trees, and those are full foliage trees, mature trees. The arborvitae is definitely going to help with the, with the, with the view, and I think that that's most important. So I do think that, uh, controlling the time and, or maybe the music, you know, when this is in use and how long this temporary structure is going to be there, is going to be important to put into that language.
Okay. I would, uh.
You live close, so this.
I do, yeah, right around the corner, right by the dead end street there. So I, I believe that, uh, it's a, certainly a, uh, great asset for the community. I think it's a great asset for the, for the region, frankly. I think it's used. And I know Alan has done a incredible job trying to bring back the community house to what it can be, you know, versus what it was. And, uh, at the same time, I am incredibly sensitive to the people who live much closer to the community house than I do. So I would be in support of, of, of allowing this tent, subject to its temporary basis. And they would have to come back on a ba, you know, whatever time that we establish to, if there's an extension, if they wanna renew it, and maybe even just an evaluation, frankly, just to say, how's it going? And then number two is, is obviously, any type of operation has to be consistent with local noise ordinances, et cetera. And so if there's two events that are till eleven and everything else is gonna be at ten o'clock, I think what you had said, I think that's, uh, it's a pretty fair and equitable accommodation, you know, recognizing that this is gonna be a, a very limited use for, for that kind of environment.
Councilman Sage? Thank you. Uh, I concur with Commissioner Hauser's remarks, and I would also like to add some kinda timing. We discussed about, uh, the foliage planting and the, um, the concealment of the dumpster. I think we should add that into, uh, whatever timing we establish here, uh, for the tent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, I agree with what was said. I sometimes drive down that street just to show people that it's such a nice street and then turn around, so I'm probably, uh, probably part of the problem right here. So, uh, I'll put a sticker on that I'm not going to the community house. Yeah, again, so I, I guess, I guess I would make a motion, um, to allow the tent to go up. That we have, oh, they, they come back in a year. So if you want it again next year, they, they come at the same time. And we have to plant the, whatever.
Arborvitae.
Arborvitae's or whatever as soon as possible. So that's my motion.
Could you add a, um, um, some kind of report at maybe three months or six months, uh, just so we're on top of it? Maybe as, Nick, is that?
At the end of the summer, maybe?
Yeah, how about the end of the summer? Okay.
Just a brief report on how it's, how it's going.
Mr. Chairman?
Vidia?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, in order to address the applicant, uh, many of the members of the audience have concerns about it being a temporary use. When we got the Cedar Brook sales trailer, we encountered the same problem. Our zoning ordinance does not have a provision for temporary uses at all. We don't have anything in our ordinance that even talks about temporary use. We have temporary sales trailers. That is the closest we get. So in this case, we are considering this technically since construction is going on in the site. I believe, uh, City Manager Blaine looked at it as a construction, as a temporary use since the site is under construction. I'm assuming that is the clause under which he initially even supported this proposal. My recommendation would be that the applicant be granted temporary approval for six months, ending October thirty-first. Because when events take place in winter, noise carries differently in summer versus in colder nights. So I would recommend that October thirty-first, the approval be valid and the applicant come back to you at the second meeting in October to request an extension for another six months. Because this should truly be a temporary use. Typically, when a temporary use ends, we would require all removal of everything associated with it. The tent, the concrete foundation, everything needs to go. In this case, my recommendation is, let us keep it to just the season. Approval be granted only for six months and the applicant comes back in the second meeting in October, seeking an extension if needed.
I, I, I'm good with what I said.
Stay with the year.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Vidia.
Okay, sure.
Uh, okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have support?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Uh, Steve, quick question to the city.
Uh, do we have any timing on those other two, uh, the planting and the dumpster?
Like, that's, I was texting Jason to see what he knew about it. It's kinda the first I heard about it. So we, I know we have to put drainage along Amy's yard. We have to get that in before I can put the arb's in. So I, I know we can get arb's, so that should not be a problem. So I just told Jason, we gotta hurry up if this is approved, get the drainage tiles in so we can plant the arb's. The dumpster, I, I, Alan was right, the original plan was to make it really fancy. Um, funds are limited. It might be a temporary woods, it would meet the code, a wood one until we can get to the full masonry one. So, uh, but we will enclose it no matter what before we use it.
Can we build that with the DPW?
Yes.
Okay.
Just fencing or something.
Yeah.
So one, one year dumpster as soon as possible, arborvitae's as soon as possible.
Report by the end of summer.
Summer report. And follow all.
Noise.
Noise and limits that the police and all of our, all of our, um, ordinances.
Yes.
With, with the understanding to the people as we understand your situation and we, you know, we don't want noise or parties there that are going too late.
Hey, you in support of all that? You were the second?
Yes.
Okay. So we have the roll call, please.
Um, Chairman McGee?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hauser? Yes. Mayor Bixson?
Yes.
Councilman Sage?
Yes.
Commissioner Clark Martin?
Yes.
Motion passes in Amos. Good luck to all of you. We appreciate you coming and, uh, speaking up, even though I know you have a great relationship. But this is the time to do these things, not in the middle of trouble. And, uh, so we're, we're glad you're here tonight. And I think, uh, what will occur there, uh, will happen in a much better fashion than it had been without you coming. So thank you, thank you very much. Uh, number six considerations and number seven miscellaneous. Nick, you got anything for us?
I will go to number nine if I may.
Go right ahead.
So, um, I believe that I've been working with the, uh, a couple of parties that should try to make the June meeting. And I, I gave Vidia a bit of a heads up. So Mike Blake Realty, if you remember, on Main Street, he had a second story approved for an apartment on the top, total renovation, historic in nature. Uh, Mike priced things out, moved in to the first floor. He's the Realtor next to Shamrock Travel. So he has come back and said, you know, I'm not gonna put the second floor on, which makes Shamrock Travel happy, 'cause there is, that's where all the buildings are tied together and it's a mess. So he's gonna come back with a renovation of the first floor, um, and bring that in and try to do it, make it as appropriate as possible. So he'll come in and we saw preliminary drawings, and then we'll get that to Vidia. So that will be a, a site plan, but technically a facade renovation. And I'm glad to announce that we've been working with a gentleman named Peter Colaj, K-O-L-A-J. Um, and Peter is a, a builder also. He purchased the Spartan Inn. And I think I told you at one point, he had purchased the Spartan Inn and said, Nick, in two weeks, I might flip this. Don't be mad at me, but I want you to know who I am. I bought it. I, I might flip it. So he bought it and somebody offered him double what he paid. Didn't like the operators and said, talked to his family and said, we're gonna keep it and we're gonna fix it. So what he's going to do is keep it, the Spartan Inn, it's gonna be called, I think, the Rochester, let's see, Rochester Boutique Inn, something like that. So he's gonna kick everybody out, basically, keep the same amount of units, renovate the whole outside of the building. In the front of the building, have a place for people that stay there. It's not a bed and breakfast, it's, it's a hotel, raise the prices by triple. I already talked to Sue Keels at the Royal Park, and if he does this right for overflow and it's a boutique hotel, she'd be glad to work with him. And we've already had those two contact each other. So, so I think, I'm very excited about it. He's gonna, he's, we saw the drawings, I shot him to Vidia, and it will be a facade renovation. We're gonna not change the parking lots, et cetera, other than I believe he's gonna take out the front curved parking area and put grass in there.
What will he do with the remainder of it? You said he would only use the front end.
No, the front end, I'm sorry, I should have kept, the front end would be where there's a kind of a lobby now. He's gonna turn it into like, when you go to a boutique hotel, you can get breakfast there for, only for the people.
Hey, it's gonna be a boutique hotel.
Boutique hotel, by the night, not by the week.
Okay.
So we vetted him, met with the police chief, yeah, met with the police chief, I know. And we're gonna, so far, he's done everything he said, like get rid of some of the bad stuff and, and his family's gonna own it and run it.
Okay.
So we're excited about that.
Redo all the units as well.
Every unit gets brand new, so he doesn't have to structurally change it, so Randy's already. So Randy's already met with him in the building code. Um, actually, I think it's, it might be enclosed, the upper floor. So there's, it's the heat and stuff is in there and people can actually walk back and forth instead of being outside. So he, he's, seems like the real deal. He also is purchasing the old, um, Roger Knapp home at one forty-seven North Main.
Okay.
Excuse me, if you remember that, it was Roger's home, then we rezoned it to RM1. And then Don Jacobo came in and bought it and turned it into a bed and breakfast.
Beautiful.
Got bored, sold it to a guy who gutted it and now walked away.
Yeah.
So, so.
That guy still owns it, though.
Yes, so he's, Peter's gonna buy it. He's gonna come in and demolish it, cause it's basically demolished right now. Put two lots there, one for him, one for his family. I've been working with Vidia. Uh, we had to go to the zoning board because it's a weird wonky driveway, but we, we think we can accomplish that. So Peter's kinda all in in Rochester, he lives in the area, so.
So two single family homes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So we're working through that. So that's pretty cool. So he seems like the real deal. I think you'll like him. He's gonna come in, got an architect, everybody, hope to see that at June.
Okay.
So I'm not sure we have anything for the second meeting in May. Other than this. Um, what can I say? So we do have a replacement. My job's been cut up in a couple of things and one of the replacement folks starts in a couple of weeks. He's the planning and zoning part of my job. Extremely experienced, extremely knowledgeable. I'm very excited to have him on our staff.
Did you know of this person before?
I did. I, I didn't, but I know of him, he owned a planning firm.
Oh, okay.
And so we know, he represented thirty-eight communities, so we're very excited about that. When he comes in, first assignment, get with Vidia and John Jackson and take our new master plan districts. Unfortunately, start over because almost all of you don't even know what they were. We're gonna come back hard, get the districts. We, we recommend keeping almost all the districts intact, refine them. He'll be an expert at that. Get with Vidia and John to get this going back through, get them all done, zoning map changed, and then rewrite the zoning ordinance that will match the districts. So we don't have any more confusion. And I think this gentleman can lead that chart fast. So we're very excited about that. So we're, maybe, maybe that might even happen the second meeting in May. If not, we'll just keep rolling it through every meeting so we can keep you guys on track. It's still gotta get back to city council ultimately for that final adoption. So I, I am very confident that this gentleman can lead that with Vidia's help and John's help.
Anything, uh, new on any of our projects that we've approved but have not moved forward?
Um, yep, so let's think about some of them. So, uh, the Pine Street, three-story, they sold all three and people are starting to move in the second story. And Wolverine decided to keep, he bought his own condo, so he's moving in the first floor. So there'd been drywall on that. We, we negotiated getting that retaining wall in the back, made the neighbor that was very concerned happy now. So we've got that, somebody already hit the wall, but they're gonna fix it. So we got that going. Um, the condos, Greg Schneider is rolling. So remember, he was gonna build the first four and then if he sells one, then he keeps going. So the wall, you can see what they're gonna look like. They look kinda wonky one.
Yeah.
But once you get that second one next to it and then all the brick and it's gonna be, it's really gonna be good. So he's getting very good reviews and, and interest in that.
He has sold at least one.
I, I don't know that he has officially, I don't think he, he's not comfortable until he knows he's so far along. So that's good. Um, the, uh, four oh seven, uh, South Main, which was the, um, sports memorabilia place, that you've seen the front gutted. That turned into a monumental effort because of what they found inside the building. So, so Steve is a very patient man. He moved temporarily into the old Friendship Factory, kept his business rolling. And now he's going, you know what, out to get that done. It's gonna be one apartment on the top and his building on the back with the addition for his additional storage for his facility. So that's going great. Um, Mr. Randazzo, we've had two meetings already with him about getting through Eagle. So now the next step is to go to city council. He wants to start moving earth before he has his building permit, cause it takes six months to get drawings, et cetera. So we're working with Eagle to release that so that we can, um, move forward, let him start that part of the project. It's more complicated than it sounds.
Right, he had mitigation that he was doing?
Right, so if there's mitigation, there's, more important, it's a lot of dirt. And we wanna make sure we know where he's going, how he's doing it, where it's going, cleanliness, timeliness.
He has to remove a lot of dirt from?
Like two hundred and fifty truckloads.
Oh, wow.
So, so we have to make sure we're not impacting First Street when we do that, right? So Forest Ridge, uh, Forest Ridge got approved, I believe, at the meeting that I was not at. And, and I just got some from, maybe they're ready to roll. I appreciated the project and the process for them. So they'll be going.
They need to submit a revised site plan.
Yes, so I think we've already got that with, uh, with, yep, Vidia's shaking her head, yep. So that worked out well. Um, lots to talk about the elevator. There's a group that's looking at purchasing it. They wouldn't do anything with it immediately. And, and they're trying to incorporate a lot of that structure and what they're doing, which can be really cool. So that's where I'm working through with them.
Who, do they own that white building that's?
They do. So, so we, we grant, the city was granted a one million dollar cleanup grant. And they, they, we would lose, it's for them to redo it, the whole site. They're gonna knock it down. Mr. Rewall was gonna build a world headquarters for, um, One Stream. One Stream backed out. They, we still have the million dollars. So we got with the work plan with the Eagle folks and we can use that money to demolish the white building. Get, start cleaning up the site and that'll eat up the million quick. And then that's a grant, so we can do that. So we're working on that. It'll just be a straight demo permit. And then within a couple of years, they would talk about what they're gonna do, the big picture with the elevator site. Mr. Rewall's also talking to us about the corner of Third and Water. Um, things are looking better for the economy. So there might be a really cool project coming in, in the corner that we were going to be part of with the town square and all that stuff. But now it might be a public-private partnership or mostly private and work with us to make that happen. So that's very exciting. Um.
Anything moving on the Village Shoe Inn?
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank, thank you. So Village Shoe Inn, Chuck Thibodeau owns that, his mom and dad passed away. They, he's financially good to do whatever he wants there. And for, he's a very emotional guy and it, for, he's going to keep that facility. And his mom's name was Marion, so he wanted to call it like Marion Hall. He had a vision, what he wanted to do there, and the vision came to fruition when we met with the owners of, um, not Johnny's, it's Ernie's, I think, in Romeo. They have a Irish pub and then a, like a tw- two-ten front street where it's like comedy acts, local music, off, that, uh, that, like, some, somebody's touring between Chicago and Detroit. They'll stop and do a little venue. They've been doing it there. I think he said seventy-eight, sixty-eight percent of his clients are from Rochester. So he went to Chuck and said, what if we turn this into a music venue? So I know, Mayor, you were at the DDA meeting.
Yeah, so they had a presentation to the DDA and it was very impressive. You know, to me, the right kind of music.
Yep.
You know, comedians, duhli pianos.
Thursday, Friday.
Definitely, we need that.
Thursday, Friday.
Lake Orion.
Exactly, it's just bigger than that. So, and not full-time food. So they want people to come eat in town, then go to the venue, ticket it only. He's literally gonna take all the parking off the site except for, I think, seventeen spaces, so.
What was that, a church way back when?
It was.
Yes.
Okay, before the Village Shoe Inn, yeah, cause I know they owned it a long time, so. So, and they're really gonna, really jazz, it's gonna be really cool. This guy seems like the right guy, so we.
Thinking of, uh, the meeting last October, the, the visioning session over at the Royal Park.
Bingo. He checked two of the boxes. He checked two of the boxes.
I think it was also interesting, he said he was gonna really push people to use the parking structure right across the street.
Right.
You know, and.
Said all the right things.
Said all the right things and online ticketing, you know, and that.
And we had, we had a meeting with him and all of our staff to, um, to look at all the potential problems. Like if Chapman House ever reopen and they're banging and he's banging, I think it's big enough. So we're, but we'll, we'll deal with that if we have a problem with not enough parking down the line, right? So, um, but yeah, so that, that's very cool. And, and to show he's for real, um, we're, we're doing Four Street right now. So Chief Seazlick said, if I was you, I would pay to have a four-inch line put in from that new water main. So that when it's time to fire suppress, which we're gonna make you do, you don't have to dig a road up and spend all that money.
Yeah.
He wrote the check and we put the tap in there so that he'll be ready to go. That was on his dime, not Chuck's. So that, that's a good sign too. So I believe.
Their deck expandable? Were they designed that way? Not, okay.
Yeah, the other one was, but not this one.
Talk about that.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, brought that up.
Let me ask you, Mr.?
Yeah, please do.
Two questions. Can you give us an update on the building that Dr. O'Talla owns those apartments?
Yes, yep, thank you. I can do that. So, so Doc O'Talla, um, we've been working together with him and our billing official. And he has full C of O potential for the upper floors, so thirteen units. They're all done, a little bit of trim. He could start leasing those. I think he's had a little bit of a problem because they're heavy construction in the basement. People that, they like them, but they're like, oh, how much longer in the basement? Till you stop doing jackhammers and stuff. So he's just about done with that. So when he's done with that, he'll start leasing the upper. I think he's gonna lease them quick. They're, I went in them, they're pretty nice.
And I believe, my recollection is, is part of his renovation was exterior as well, correct? The parking lots and the islands?
Yes, yes, yes.
Is he gonna do that?
He has to do that, yep, before we get to the C of O issue. So it was winter, so we, we gave him a temporary for the upper floor, but he still committed it. You're right, the islands, all that. We have to work out the heating units and the window wells. So we still have one thing to get over, but we're working with him. But the answer is yes, he had to do all that upgrade. So he did a little bit of landscaping in the fall, but it, it was winter when he was really working hard, so.
And one more comment, and I've driven by this more times I want to be, the tide cleaners. Okay.
Sign.
There's a whole bunch of construction debris in the back, like some pallets and all this.
Okay.
Is there any way to get that off? It's, it's.